Good evening. Welcome to the Yukon City Council and the Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. We're gathered here in the council chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street of Yukon, Oklahoma, on September 24th approximately 7:00 PM. This evening we'll hear an invocation given by Pastor Gene Newberry from the South Yukon Church of Christ, followed by the flag salute. Please rise if you're able.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we take this time to praise you, to give you our thanks and our adoration for who you are. And heavenly Father, we thank you for your word that gives us wisdom and understanding and guidance to walk our daily lives. And heavenly Father, I pray over this meeting that your very presence will guide them through the power of your word, through the power of your spirit, to grant them wisdom and understanding that will bring wellness to the community, that will bring goodness to all, and protection. And heavenly Father, we just know that all things will be done in your honor and your glory, and we pray all this to Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Shriver.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, we'll have, we do not have any presentations or proclamations this evening. At this time, we'll have our visitor's section of our agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time and state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the city of Yukon business. Do we have any visitors that would like to address the city council?
So I live on 970 Dover Mansion, and I've lived there for-
Sir, we need your name, please.
Pardon?
We need your name for the record.
Ronnie Short, 970 Dover Mansion.
Now, just one second, Ronnie. You may also address, because I believe your issue is an item that's appearing on the agenda, you could also speak at length during that time.
The speeding, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, it's on the agenda. I'm going to have to look at the exact-
I looked at it today, but that doesn't mean I didn't miss it.
Yes, sir.
So do I need to sit back down?
No, you're welcome to address. Please limit to three minutes, and then we can pick it up later as well.
Right, right. Well, I'm just concerned, you know, I have grandbabies at play, ride their bikes, and I'm clocking, I have a radar gun, I'm clocking these people at 50 still even with the stop signs. That didn't deter any of the speeding. It didn't do a thing. But that's my biggest concern, you know, I call the police, they act like, you know, they don't want to do anything about it, you know, and they want overtime, and I see there's a lot of stuff they're wanting in this meeting, and they're having to acquire overtime just to get patrols to patrol the neighborhood. I don't get that.
Thank you, Ron.
That's just my concern, so I'll wait till we have, see what we have to say.
I appreciate that, Ronnie. Thank you. Anyone else having business with the city council for the visitor's section? All right. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council reconvenes Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the YMA consent docket. This item's placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th, 2024. Do I hear a motion? In a sec. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority reconvenes Yukon City Council. We'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. Similarly, this item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 20th, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $307,984.67. The renewal of the existing contract with the YPS to provide four school resource officers for the contract term of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, for the sum of $300,000. The Oklahoma Municipal League 2024 Proposed Bylaw Amendments. I make a motion to remove item A from the consent docket and hear it in regular order.
Which item?
Item A, the minutes of the regular meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. So the remaining items, B through D, do I hear a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
I just had a quick question. Are we not doing the private school this year?
We did three, don't quote me on this, three meetings ago perhaps? Maybe four.
We did St. John's.
Four meetings ago, yes.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting, which were taken out of the consent agenda for August the 20th, 2024. I make a motion to amend item three of the minutes, with the minutes that I will now read, replacing the minutes on item three of those minutes, happens to be the discussion item only, and I'll read these minutes here. I'll read the replacement here. Go on to the city clerk, please. Discussion item only, this is in the minutes, item three, discussion inquiry into the status and codification of ordinances with an in-depth review of ordinance number 1431. The minutes to be reflected by this proposed amendment is Mayor Pillmore raised concerns about the status of ordinance number 1431, which had not been codified despite being passed two years ago. City Clerk Doug Shivers explained that the delay was due to an amendment requiring a rewrite by the city attorney and the time needed to get the amended version signed, which led to it being omitted from the supplement. Shivers assured the council that this was an isolated incident and no other items had faced similar issues. He outlined the codification process where ordinances are sent to municipal code and updated twice a year, noting that outstanding items have now been sent for codification ahead of schedule. He asked if there were any other missing items so that they could determine what went wrong. Councilmember Zimmerman identified other recent ordinances that appeared uncodified, and Shivers confirmed that all ordinances passed or not receive a number. Councilmember Selby also noted that the ordinance number 1431 had to be rewritten and inquired about the cost of codification. Shivers responded that costs vary based on the number of ordinances and their complexity. Shivers also clarified that ordinances go into effect upon publication, particularly those with an emergency clause. Mayor Pillmore stressed the need for a thorough review of past agendas to ensure no oversights were overlooked, no ordinances were overlooked, and emphasized the importance of a reliable process to prevent future oversights. So again, the motion is to replace item three with these amended, or with this changed minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider, I'm sorry, at this time, we will have reports from the boards, commissions, and city officials. We'll begin with Robbie Williams with the wastewater treatment project. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. At the last meeting, I was asked to provide an overview of the project that we're currently working on and the future phases, so I just have a PowerPoint presentation. This won't take very long. So if we go to the next slide. Oh, I have a clicker. This is the current project that we're working on and we've been talking about that we've already submitted to DEQ. This project will bring to the council at the next meeting to get permission to advertise, and then we anticipate advertising the project the first of October. We still have not received comments from DEQ on our submittal. It's been 28 days. We usually give them about 45 days before we contact them, so that's where we're at. But to explain the project to you, and these are the base bid items, and we're going to start as the flow of the water enters the plant. So the first thing we're going to do is install two new influent pumps, and we're going to, we're going to remove the screw pumps that have been there since the plant was built in the late 70s. Those two screw pumps have been replaced during that time, but that is where we actually lift the water, because as the gravity sewer comes in, it's low, we have to lift that water up in order to process it through the plant. So we'll install two submersible pumps, that's the latest technology. We'll also have some sensors to where those pumps can monitor the flow of the water coming in at our screens, to keep the water down low so we make sure the water goes through our screens and does not go around them. Then the water enters the aeration basin, that's the heart of the plant. That's where we keep the microorganisms in there. They have to have oxygen or air to live, to digest the sludge. If they lose air, they'll start eating themselves, so it's very important that we keep air in the aeration basin. The original blower building in the aeration, it was built in the late 90s, so it's, we're getting on 30 years, and it's just time to replace the equipment. A lot of new technology in 30 years with blowers, and I've told you, they're like a big hairdryer, just blowing air into that basin. Then the next thing we're going to do, if you see the little yellow dot next to the three black circles, those are the clarifiers. We're going to construct a new splitter box, and what that's going to do, that's going to give us the capability to send flow to either three of those structures. And so one of the things we're doing is we're going to rehabilitate the clarifier that's shown on the left, and so when that is done, our larger clarifier will be able to take it down and do maintenance on it. And that structure was built in 2007 and has been running continuously for 17 years. Then the last thing we're going to do is alternate number one, we're going to bid the new wet well and influent pumps to the river. That's so that when the river rises, we're at flood stage, or the river's up, we can actually pump and push water into the river. And then alternate number two, we're going to remove the equipment in the blower building, and this will allow the plant staff to have additional storage. They've been wanting a new maintenance building structure out there, so that would take care of that problem, too. And again, we're using the Canadian County ARPA funds, which we have approximately $3.7 million. So that's why we batted the alternates, to make sure we spend the money. Then the second project, I'll go to the next slide. Yukon was awarded this project through EPA, is through Congress, in April, and as I've told you, we're going to do an environmental study. Anytime you spend federal money, you have to do an environmental study, and we are putting a new pipe in the river. So the yellow is the alignment, and as the pipe diagonals to the left, it'll base, it will actually be about five feet off where our existing pipe is, and we have an existing 20-foot easement there. So that's what we're doing with this, and this goes, this is part of alternate number one on what we're going to build. We're going to build the wet well and the pump. Hopefully, we'll have enough money, and then at phase two, we'll actually install the pipe to go to the river with that grant money. Phase three is, this is a grant we submitted in April. Again, this is EPA through the, through Congress, and we're going to, we're asking, this grant, we're asking for a million dollars. Yukon would match $250,000 to build a new belt press, I mean, not, just to install a new belt press in the existing building. We will not have to build a new building. The belt press that we have now, we put that in there in 2001. And with that project, we will not know till April of 2025 if we receive that grant fund. The remaining phases, phase four would be a backup generator. Right now, we do not have backup power to our blowers for our aeration basin, so that's very important that we get that done someday. And then phase five is the digester equipment. That's what actually pumps the sludge to the belt press, press the water out of it, and then it's land applied. And then phase six is doing some basic building and electrical upgrades at the plant, offices in other locations throughout the plant. So that's, and then the last one, I had to put it on a different slide. Phase seven is our equalization ponds. We need to go out there, go out there and dredge those out so we can get more capacity. And again, as the water enters the headworks, we have the ability to pump water to this pond, and then after the rain events, storm events go away, then it actually, gravity flows back to the headworks of the plant, and then we process the water. So that's what I have for you tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Still on track to get the bidding process kicked off during the next meeting?
Yes, we're going to bring that to you, for you to give us permission to advertise.
Great.
Will the furthest west clarifier be able to hold up while we tear down the furthest east, the larger one?
Well-
While it is being maintained? Is there any?
I'm just going to walk over here. So that's the only one working right now, the one we built 17 years ago.
Right.
This one was repaired in 2014. We also repaired this structure right here with the pumps that go with these two structures. So we need to repair this one because each one of these are rated for 1.5 million gallons a day, and we process 3 million gallons a day. So once we have this one running, then that one, we can then use these two to process the flow, take this one out of service and do the maintenance on it that we need to.
My understanding was the middle one wasn't working. I thought when we toured, the middle one was down, wasn't it, Pillmore?
It's not, yeah, I don't think it's working.
The middle, the middle one was rehabilitated in 2014, it's ready to go.
It's ready to go, but it hasn't been used in quite a while, right?
It's never been used.
It's been mothballed.
It's sitting there.
Yeah.
And so the way the flow works, once it goes through here, when it goes to these clarifiers, what we're doing is we're settling the sludge to the bottom, and then we have rakes on the bottom that can rake it, put it in a hole. And for instance, this clarifier, the water goes to this pump station right here, and we can either pump water back to the aeration basin, or we can pump to the digester. And then the digester goes to the belt press, we press the sludge out, and then the sludge is taken to the landfill or the land applied. Same thing for these two structures. The, its flow goes to this pump station right here, and we can return it to this, to the aeration basin, or we can send it to the digester, we can go that way. So when we install the splitter box, right now, we can, we have a box here, we have one here, we can only take the water to these two from here, and we have one here that goes here. So when we build this box, it can go to all three of the clarifiers.
So do the smaller units have to run tandem? Do they have to run in sequence together? Why haven't we been using that one if it's been rebuilt eight years ago and it's just been sitting?
Because right now, they do have to run in tandem.
Okay.
So once we make this modification, we can use any three of them. But our plant's rated for 3 million gallons a day, and each one of these are 1.5, so both of them make up 3 million gallons a day. This one is rated for 4 million gallons a day, and when we built that in 2007, DEQ permitted that as a redundant structure, so.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Robbie. At this time, we'll hear an update on the street panel replacements by Arnold Adams.
Good evening.
Evening.
Quick little update, as you remember, in July, the council approved a concrete panel replacement project, 96 panels, and I'm happy to report to you, as I think, we went and did a ribbon cutting night at one of them, and you drove across a couple of others, I don't know if you realize that while you were doing it, while you were driving, but I'm happy to announce that we have completed, as of this morning, 27 panels out of the 96.
Outstanding, more than a quarter. It's great.
So, and our crews had to take off for about a week. We've had rock the roots, some other things that we need to get caught up on some of them, so our crew has been kind of stable for a week, but we're going to get back started Monday.
When do you think we'll have half of them done, if we're already a quarter of the way through?
In less than two weeks. I hope that the contract, we have two contractors working, they're doing 24 each. I hope they are complete within two weeks.
Oh, wow, so you could be 75% done by the end of the month.
Right, and then it's going to take us a few months to complete ours, I believe, or maybe even a little longer.
As soon as we complete them, we're going to double the budget as long as the council approves, so we want more of these.
Believe me, I hear looking at these projects while we're doing them, you drive across like, oh my God, why didn't we do this?
Yeah.
Then I get these calls, why didn't you do this panel? I have a list of more than 96 already, so.
Yeah, well, get the next 96. I think 96 is the magic number for batches of these.
Right, it's working out great.
So I ran into a lot of-
We really appreciate that.
I ran into a lot of the crews out there, and I've stopped, talked to them, taking some pictures on my social media, and all the crews have been real nice, too, real professional, real clean, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion here? All right, thank you so much, Arnold. At this time, we'll get an update from you as well on the intersection improvement at Yukon Parkway and Vandiment.
Well, as you may remember back, I believe it was approved last December for the, our engineers to go out and do the design work, so they completed that sometime around February and held utility meetings. There's five utilities that need to be moved. We're in that process now. We finally got word back from AT&amp;T, or OG&E, excuse me, that they're going to have their parts in and start work November 17th. When we started, when we decided to do the project, we were told that from the time the design work was completed, that the project would be nine to 12 months before we could bid it, probably to get all the utilities relocated, so I think we're within that window. I spoke with Robbie today, I think we'll be able to bid sometime, hopefully by the end of the year or first of January. So he does not want to bid the project, so OG&E is onsite and working to give the contractors a fair. But as you remember, there are going to be dedicated left-hand turn lanes, all four ways, a dedicated right turn lane from Wagner, I mean, excuse me, Vandiment to Yukon Parkway, and then, of course, there'll be new striping, new sidewalk, and obviously new signal lights, and all new poles, all new signals. So we're really excited that, if you've ever driven that intersection in the mornings or evening, school buses trying to turn is a nightmare, so we're really excited and hope we get that going.
I was going to say, first day of school, I got a, can we fix that intersection? It's in the works. We're working on it.
Believe me, I wish we could have started in December when it was approved, but that was just the design, and, but I think we're on track, so hopefully we get to bid that December or early January, get that going.
Sounds awesome.
Thank you, Arnold.
You should all work on them.
This time, we'll have an update from Mitchell Horton on the sidewalks on South Cornwell Drive.
Well, sidewalks are kind of slow because the crews that are doing the concrete panel replacement is actually doing that work, so we can't have them in two places at one time. Arnold has been working with the contractor on some rough layouts to see what we can do. As you remember, this is one that we had started last budget year and with continuation. The request for this one was sidewalks on both sides of Cornwell, and we're working from the south to the north. So like I said, Arnold is working with the contractor, trying to come up with some ideas and try to do the easy part, so we just need to figure out which side we want to focus on at this time. So basically, right now, I think we're focused on the east side because it's going to be the easiest, and we'll stop at the park. One of the questions had come up about the railroad tracks. Right now, we have the belief we want to stay completely away from the railroad because of our current issue that we had over on Yukon Parkway with that trail and dealing with the railroad, so we'll be working from the park basically back to the north, or south, I mean, so, but we'll keep you informed as we move forward, but like I said, they'll have to stop the panel replacement or finish it before we move to the sidewalks.
Any other questions on that item? Thank you, Mitchell. Could you also give us an update on the treasury investment RFP, Mitchell?
Okay, we have figured out that there's 13 banks with local interest or some type of interest locally that was determined to be used for the, send out the financial service RFP draft. I believe that Doug had sent it out this afternoon, if not first thing in the morning, so we'll be working on that and make sure everybody receives that. We may have to follow up because it was sent to me and I couldn't open it up, but Jason could open it up, it was sent to him, so I don't know if our software and the link has an issue, so we'll figure that out, but that's a software issue, not a staff issue. So we'll let you know as that comes along and what we're doing, and we'll-
Do we need any adjustments to the timeline?
The timeline is built in. They were planning on trying to have a meeting in person or by Zoom on September 17th, but we believe that we can make that time, there's enough time in that, and by the time we receive it, then the council can review all those proposals that they've received.
Okay, yeah, if we feel like it's too rushed, we want to do it right, it's a lot of work that the banks are putting into this, and-
Yeah.
If we need to make some adjustment, we could do so at the next council meeting.
Okay, well, we'll keep you informed, and we'll make sure we're not having any issues and everybody receives the information that they need.
Great. At this time, we'll get a utility rate implementation update from Jason Beal. It's bad that I get excited about utility rate implementation.
Yes, well, good evening, mayor and city councils. I've set before you a packet, and what I've done is, there's five pieces to it, there's two of the proposed, the proposed water and sewer, the proposed solid waste, and then the current. And I made it where you can just read kind of line by line, side by side with the current and the proposed, because trying to put all the changes in one document with all the strikeout red notes, it got very, very complicated. So the main highlights of the new proposed ordinance is that it accepts, you know, the council accepted the utility rate study, so those rates for water and sewer and sanitation are in here. The main thing that staff did, and I do want to commend staff, we worked together as a team with Mitch, Arnold, Danielle, Doug, and Jason, our utility billing supervisor, and went line by line, fee by fee, and really dug deep into it and got quite a bit of feedback. So the main highlights is the rates are right from the utility study, and there's some sections that have, that grew. Those mainly are because we added in the outside, we have some agreements- We have some agreements for outside water service that in the future we may have to service. And that's where a lot of those sections grew from, by adding outside and, and changing those fees and rates to reflect what it truly will cost the city and the citizens of Yukon to supply that, so. And then there is a resolution in there, so once we do present this to you, we will have to update that fee resolution as well. So, so our plan is either in the next meeting or two, to, you know, get public input as well as council input and come to the final version. And once that's done, then the next two, two and a half months spend marketing uh, the plan to the citizens as well as promoting paperless billing. We're really pushing that where we can offer a cheaper bill if you sign up for paperless billing. Uh, because it costs the citizens and the city of Yukon less to have to do the, uh, the mail out and the folding and the postage and all that. So we are going to push out some, uh, marketing materials to really push email notifications and all, and some different new options for paperless, uh, to get your bill paperless. So, and then, um, our plan is either that rate will take into effect, depending on the exact date of, uh, when this is approved, December, January, so it's those winter months where a little less water usage, so.
Jason, on the, a couple of questions on the resolution, you'll give us a proposed version of that resolution?
Yes, once we have the ordinance finalized, then we can, uh, then we'll update that resolution or just do, uh, do what we need to do to make the ordinance.
Aligned.
Align with it.
Are, are there any, the team that's been working on this is great, and you've really pulled in so many departments of the city that have looked at it from different angles because it affects more than just utility billing or, or water and sewer department. Are there any significant open items that need to be resolved in the next week or so?
I don't believe so. I think we're, we're going to meet at least one more time to, to go over it. But, um, it's really just looking at the, uh, the current fees and everything that's in there. Some of them are a significant increase, but those are going to be for, uh, outside rates. And so just keep that in mind, so.
Yeah. So we plan, I think, based on the schedule, the project plan and schedule, we plan to have these final ordinances at the next city council meeting. Is that right?
Yes, if we don't get any feedback on, uh, if there's no changes, or even if they're minor changes, then we will be ready to propose these. Um, Roger has them, so again, we want to make sure he has plenty of time to, to review the legal part of it. But, uh, so as long as he's had time as well to review them.
And I think we'll, so we'll have the proposed final, um, ordinances and code for next agenda, next meeting. We'll also have a public hearing, I believe, so that members of the public, just like when we accepted the rate study, members of the public can also provide feedback. And then we'll plan to have a, uh, a vote on adopting these. And, and then, you know, Jason Beal and Jason Morrell, our utility billing department leader, will be able to implement.
Yes, and just for anybody listening or watching, uh, the utility rate study, uh, is really a good piece of information. Um, so if you, uh, have some downtime and want to read that, uh, we do have it available on our, uh, city website in two different spots, on the utility billing page and our links page. But, uh, there is some good information there and, and stuffs.
That's excellent. Um, thank you for your work on this, Jason, just like on the charter change, um, charter change amendments. You have pulled together a great team and have, uh, worked so closely with them. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. That brings us to the end of our reports from boards, commissions, and city officials. This time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, authorizing a forensic review of municipal finance and operations as well as record-keeping functions. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On page sixty of the agenda packet, the full resolution lays out the reasons that we're doing this particular, uh, why we're proposing this particular resolution. And I'll begin, there's three main items. And the first is that we, we want to make sure that when ordinances are passed, like the very important one we, we just saw with utilities, or another one that we discussed in the last meeting regarding mayoral powers, we want to make sure that they're recorded properly and codified. The second thing is when the city of Yukon budgets dollars, we want to ensure that those budgeted dollars are not, don't, our expenditures don't exceed the budgets. And the third is that we want to make sure that the taxpayers' dollars are stewarded well. And those three things, in the last three months, we've had breakdowns on. Um, the most recent was in the last meeting, and we went into some detail earlier in this meeting about that one. The second one is the one that our own normal balance sheet auditor, normal financial auditor identified, which was the, um, overspending of the budget back in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, which was a small amount of overspending in the fire department. And that was highlighted in the city of Yukon audit report published by that independent auditor. And the third was the fact that on, um, in June, we identified approximately thirty million dollars of the city's total fifty-four million dollar cash balance that was not placed in market-bearing interest accounts, market-rate interest accounts. It was bearing below-market-rate interest at approximately point one-five percent interest. And that's a total loss to the cit- to the citizens and to the city of taxpayer dollars, just on a conservative estimate for the last couple of years of about two-point-eight million dollars. So the reason that we're engaging this is, these are three things that have been found, one by the external auditors, two by members of the city council, and have been found, um, in just the, the small amount of time that we volunteer to the city as unpaid city council persons. And we need someone that's independent to look into these things a little bit further and to do some, some, you know, deeper review to make sure that, so we're not looking for anything. We're reviewing in an in-depth way some very specific things, and those are outlined in the resolution.
And it's going to cost?
It's going to cost.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand? Is that what it said?
We're doing a budget amendment for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You'll see in that budget amendment as well that there's also one-point-two-five million dollars of increased revenue to the city by reinvesting that thirty million dollars. So net-net, you know, we're going to essentially pay for this with, uh, interest income that the city is now receiving on invested funds in about six weeks.
Can you budget, though, for money you haven't already gotten?
We already got it in August. Doug's going to give us an update in the next meeting on that, uh, on the interest income from our main bank that we received in August when he reinvested those funds on August the first. It'll be approximately a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand bucks. Any other questions on this particular item? All right. Any, uh, seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
This time, we'll consider approving a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five budget. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
This time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-four, a resolution of the city council of Yukon, of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, authorizing North American Forensic Accounting LLC to have direct access to city records, including bank accounts, general ledgers, sub-ledgers, payable records, and payroll records. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll discuss a breach of the executive session confidentiality agreement from the prior city council meeting. This item will address responsibilities of city council members concerning confidentiality of his, of executive sessions and explore potential measures to reinforce compliance with the agreement. The discussion will also consider the recent incident involving undisclosed, unauthorized disclosure of confidential information from the executive session on social media platforms. Do I have any discussion on this item? Um, during the last executive session, you know, and executive sessions are really important for, uh, for the city council to be able to share. There's very limited reasons why we go into executive session, employment matters, litigation involving the city, economic development, potential property purchases, very, very limited reasons. Um, those are some of them. It's really important that we, as city council members, are able to have trust in one another and that what's shared in, in executive session, um, as, as is seen in the, in the confidentiality agreement that we all signed, that, you know, this confidentiality agreement means a lot. And it's not a loose thing, you know, we don't all have to agree, but we all, we all need to maintain confidentiality in not only the letter of the law, but in the spirit of the law in order to build a strong city council that's functioning and can serve the citizens in a robust way.
Mr. Reinhardt, what's the procedure if those things are violated typically?
The Open Meetings Act does not require the signing of the confidentiality, confidentiality agreement. That's something that's routinely promoted by the municipal league and O-MAG to prevent, um, potential leaks of information that comes out. Um, an act, an actual violation of the Open Meetings Act can result in, a willful violation can result in subjecting each member of the public body to criminal sanctions under section three fourteen of the act. Uh, and it can also cause all the minutes of, and records of the executive session to be immediately made public. So I, I'm not certain that incident you're speaking of rises to that level since it's not required that the confidentiality agreement be signed. But it is something that we and other municipalities routinely enter into when you go into executive session.
Thank you.
Are we speaking at a hypothetical or a specific instance?
I, I think there was an incident.
Right, and if I, and what I'd like to address is that I think you're speaking of mine. What I wrote about Mr. Castro, I learned prior to the meeting, uh, city council meeting even happening. What I wrote about our former city manager, I learned after the meeting when I went and spoke to the parties involved and said, tell me about that day. And I wrote their words verbatim. That's called transparent government. I did not write about anything that I learned in that meeting. What I wrote about was what I found out after the meeting from the people involved.
All I know is, leaving that meeting, I felt like I was watching an episode of Tom and Jerry when Tom ate a canary.
That's your opinion?
So after the meeting, said, said council member went and asked?
I went to the parties involved and said, tell me what happened.
After executive session?
Right. I did not tell them what we discussed in executive session. I said, tell me about that day. And what they told me is what should have been asked probably that particular day. None of that that I wrote was revealed at all in executive session.
But it was discussed in executive session?
Not what I wrote. I wrote verbatim what I was told by the parties involved, which is why I was justifying why I voted no.
What, what I read was what I heard in executive session.
I'm sorry, I did not find any of that out, what happened that day in executive session.
So I'm not, I'm not sure how much trust I have in executive session at this time.
Is there any other discussion on that item? This time, we'll consider approving the placement of a stop sign at River Mesa Drive slash Dover Mansion and Oasis Court. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So we're marking out the as recommended by the planning commission? That's on mine. It's not on everybody else's.
Planning commission did not consider that.
That's correct. That's correct. I think I have the correct agenda.
Okay, I don't.
Do I have any discussion on this item? Would you like to, go ahead, Arnold? And Ronnie, Ronnie, you're free to speak as well on this item if you'd like.
So exactly what intersection are you approving to put stop signs?
We drove over there. Adam, you want to tell about your, you, you went over there, took a bunch of pictures.
We ran all the data. I think, I, I think I would like to amend the motion to actually approve the acting city manager and eventually the city manager and the public works director, the police, you know, chief to decide on the right place for this.
Can I give you a little bit of background?
Please do, yeah.
On June eleventh, we had a traffic commission meeting. There were several people there, and I apologize, I don't remember their names. There was at least five. I don't remember. Okay, and so what was discussed was the intersection, and it's sheet seventy-eight, seventy-nine in your packet.
Yes.
That, a letter came from John Corn to me, to asking to put this on the traffic commission, and there is a map. And that says Dover Mansion, Oasis Court, and I believe that intersection is really an Oasis Lane, I believe, Oasis Lane, Oasis Court, Dover Mansion. And on the map that is showed on that, it shows that that is River Mesa, and that is not correct.
Yeah.
Right. But River Mesa is the street that goes north and south.
Got it. Yeah, they changed it.
That dead ends into Dover Mansion.
Yeah, Google, Google has the wrong name on it.
So that was approved at the June eleventh, or excuse me, July eleventh, I'm sorry, again, June eleventh meeting.
Yep.
Those signs, it was approved at the traffic mission to do the four-stop signs at that intersection, some other speed limit signs. And so we put those signs up in the next couple of weeks. And there was a gentleman, I apologize, he is a police officer from the city of Oklahoma City. What is it?
Dylan Quirk, yeah.
He contacted my office and said, that is not the intersection that I was discussing.
Got it.
Um, and that is Dover Mansion and River Mesa. It's a, it, River Mesa.
Is it an intersection or is it just?
It's a T.
It's, oh, it's a T, okay.
River Mesa dead end into Dover Mansion.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That, that's what rung a bell when Dylan and I spoke on the phone.
That he intended for that intersection to have the stops on, which is one block west of Dover Mansion and Oasis Court and Oasis Lane.
I, I think, I mean, I won't speak for the council, but I think, like, I support the right traffic control there that you guys recommend. I think it's a matter of getting the right, you know, getting the, the members of the neighborhood. We certainly don't want speeding on, on that longer stretch that's uninterrupted. Um, I've looked at the traffic data. It looks like a very small, you know, less than three percent of people are speeding, but there are some that are speeding excessively, so I think that is a concern. So.
His concern was put on the next traffic commission for July. We didn't have a quorum. We could not vote on it.
Yeah.
It was back again in August. We did not have a quorum. It's on the agenda again for next Tuesday night.
How do we need to amend this item? Should, should we wait for a traffic commission, or do you believe that you have a good answer on, on what this entails?
Well, my recommendation is, like, we have always done, and I believe I feel is a good system, is let it go to the traffic commission and get their recommendation.
Think just with the delay without having a quorum in August, I think that, you know, set us back a little bit. So we don't, we, we need to have a quorum. We need to make sure that the members of the traffic commission that are great, you know, doing their service to the city as citizens, that they show up and that we need to, uh, ensure that we've got the right intersection. So we have a motion on the table. Uh, I guess we've had some.
I've got it.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
So I'm looking at Google Maps here, and Linda Lane turns into River Mesa Drive, which.
That's not correct. That turns into Dover Mansion. That's not correct, that turns into Dover Mansion.
Okay.
You're showing this one.
Yeah. Yeah. We can vote on this motion or we can, or we can propose to table this motion, uh, and maybe move, have the traffic commission do this, what do you guys think?
Send it back to the traffic commission.
Uh, make a motion to table the current.
It's Mr. Wooton's motion, so he'll need to make the change.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wooton.
So I'm, I'm in my motion to send it back to the traffic commission, um, at their next meeting to take a look at this.
Second.
Any discussion on that item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Uh, Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve the renewal of ambulance service agreement with Pafford EMS of Oklahoma Inc. as recommended by the fire chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the lease agreement with Pafford EMS of Oklahoma Inc. for the property located at one oh two South Ranchwood Boulevard. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I meant to bring this up earlier, but do, do we have a clause in the, um, in the lease that has the, has this lease being co-terminous with the, um, with the service for ambulance service?
Yes, I do believe so. If that's what you're asking, that is part of our services with them that we have worked out, they lease the building from us at a monthly rate.
But that if, if, if it went any, there was any termination of the, um, ambulance service agreement, would this lease also terminate? I can't imagine that Pafford would want to lease a building that they weren't using and we would probably would not want them to lease a building that they weren't using.
Mayor, section twenty-four of the lease says that landlord tenant shall each have a right to terminate, terminate the lease in the event that Pafford ceases to provide ambulance services within the city of Yukon.
Thank you so much. I don't have any more discussion, does anyone else have any other items? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the purchase of wildland protective gear for the fire department in the amount of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars off of state contract SW one seven two four one with sixty-nine thousand sixty-nine dollars and nine cents coming from the assistance to the firefighters grant and six thousand nine hundred and six dollars and ninety-one cents coming from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fire department capital improvement budget as recommended by the fire chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, you want to tell us what you want to tell us on this? Wildland protective gear.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Uh, so this is actually our dual, dual purpose gear. We use this for, uh, wildland fires, grass fires and such. We also use it for vehicle extrication. It's a lot lighter weight than our bunker gear, but it's NFPA certified. We purchased the, the current gear we have back in twenty fourteen. NFPA standard fifteen eighty-one, ten years for a year. So we're, we came due. So we put this in our capital budget, but we also applied for this AFG grant and we were fortunate enough to get it, so.
I love that you do that, you're always writing grants, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Sure. Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing staff to advertise for bids for the fire department training facility currently budgeted in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fire department capital improvement budget. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So we talked a little bit about a fire tower, Sean. When I reviewed the details here, it looks like, uh, I can't remember, six or eight kind of containers that are put together. Is there, is there also a tower of a similar height to the structures that we have in our, in our?
Yeah, this is the three story.
Three story, okay.
Yes, it's three story. Uh, it's kind of like Midwest cities, they have one that I was like to take you guys to tour sometime.
Yep.
Um, it's a four story. This is a three story, um, it's going to have three burn rooms, one on each story. We can repel, it's got a landing at the top that has anchor points and stuff, so we can repel off of it for rope rescue operations and such too.
Okay.
So.
Similar to Midwest city, just a level, a level smaller than their, they have a pretty good sized department though.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Will you be able to do other trainings for other departments?
Yes, so I mean, I was even talking to Chief Corn, you know, the police department could use this for search and rescue. We can host classes for, you know, other departments. We, you know, we have automatic aid with Oklahoma City, so some of their stations will come over and do dual training with us. Uh, we won't live burn all the time in it, but we'll also have a smoke machine where you can smoke it up, because it takes a lot to actually do the live burns. Um, you gotta, you know, follow all the NFPA standards and such, so, but we will burn at least quarterly in it if, if we get this tower, so.
Great.
And my understanding is you had to go multi-level to get some basement?
Yes.
Explain that as well.
So to, for the NFPA standard for live fire training, you're supposed to be able to simulate going downstairs and upstairs. So if you're burning on the second floor downstairs, it simulates the basement and you can go upstairs for a second story.
Thank you.
Any other discussion here? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion for grant application to Oklahoma Emergency Management to construct a fire department training tower to cover fifty percent of the cost with the other fifty percent paid from the fire department pest fund as recommended by the fire chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Way to go, chief. After those, uh, funds again.
Yeah, so after we were, you know, I know we had put this in our, in our capital improvement, but I was notified by the Canadian County Emergency Manager about this grant, it's emergency response capabilities and AMPACs grant program. And, uh, it's some of the eligible capital projects, mainly construction of public safety or fire training centers, so, I mean, I fell right into it, so. Why not?
You guys are on a streak, winning these grants, so we'll cross our fingers and hope this one, we win it.
Absolutely.
Alright, seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the purchase of six overhead doors for Fire Station Two in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars to be purchased from the DH base using buy board contract six five seven dash two one to be paid from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fire department capital improvement budget as recommended by the fire chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief?
Just kidding, you can sit down. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving updated recording on the property deed of Freedom Trail Park as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider a motion for discussion, consideration and a possible action to approve surface improvements in the parking spaces at five hundred West Main abutting five two eight West Main Street as recommended by the Main Street Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm happy to discuss this with you, something that our design point has been working on for a few years. And, you know, the background to this, um, is very visible to you. We started fundraising for a mural on the five twenty-eight building, which is our office, our main street office. And that was about a one-year process from raising the fifteen thousand dollars for that and to having the, um, the, that beautiful Yukon sunset mural installed. The next year, we, um, put the, uh, environmental friendly lights on it. And the third phase of this is, um, we would like to have, uh, a space improvement at the base of that, uh, which essentially is five hundred West Main abutting to the sunset. And you can see on the conception, conceptual design that you have there, um, what that space looks like in terms of, uh, just the parking, as wide as parking spaces are and, um, as long as the building is, so that's fifty feet and then as wide as the, as deep as the parking spaces are there. So there's some changes from this conceptual that I want to point out. Thanks Stephanie for handing those out. So we, we started, um, with this concept and we, after meeting with, uh, with Arnold and Mitchell and, uh, our, um, our landscaping consultant that we were checking with, uh, they, uh, were concerned, the core samples, uh, determined there wasn't enough drainage to put the artificial turf there. And so, you know, that's an important part of that. So then we went back to the drawing board and working with Arnold again, uh, for the idea of putting, um, decorative stamped concrete there. So what you see in the, the design rendering where it is green turf would be the stamped concrete. And, um, I have some, some slides that might be helpful to kind of show those updates. So it's in your agenda packet. You can see the first one there where it shows the, um, where it shows the, uh, stamped concrete there. So it'd be decorative, uh, texturedish, um, and colored. And then in, in place of what you see where the ballers are, if you have one, if you have a copy that has ballers around the outside, we're planning to purchase these, um, self-rusting steel planters that we will mount onto locking wheels that we would be able to define the perimeter of that area for when it's in use as, you know, small events in a parklet area. The next slide you see after that planter rendering kind of, uh, helps demonstrate the need to define that area. This, so this is, um, this is the one that shows a vehicle going off of those cement, uh, steps into the roadway and this happens from time to time. Our emergency staff will let you, I'll tell you, I think it happened a year ago the last time. It's just amazing how people will drive right straight through there and of course, there's much more damage that can happen, bodily damage more than the vehicle damage. And then some other slides that you have in there, um, shows, yeah, shows, uh, some of the uses that we've had of it. Immediately, as soon as we opened this up and pulled the barricades back, we started having travelers from Arizona and many, many that are coming from overseas already. But in each of these pictures, I want to point out what the surface looks like. This is, those, those folks right there that are taking their, their selfies there, that was with Rock the Route, I believe that they were there. And this was the bottom of it, this is the surface that we're showing when we have visitors coming from overseas or from other, um, from other countries. And of course, just, uh, events and activities, it's just a, a stop that people commonly have. And then we, we do use it for, um, there we were presenting, um, some checks and then we hosted, um, a school group, every year we host a school group, there, they got to meet up with the artists. And so we do use that area, um, in various ways. This was our cleanup day. I think if you look closer, you can see Mayor in the background there. But our, our cleanup day that we, uh, do, use as a gathering spot, we collect all the trash and then we feed our volunteers at the end of that. And so we, uh, block off that area. We've also, this last year, we hosted our downtown block party and that was a fundraiser to actually raise funds to pay for these surface improvements. And you can see how, how that is used. And then one of the other things that we do, um, this last year, we host our city employee appreciation, uh, cookout. So we do several little events there, um, throughout the year. And we really feel that the surface improvements will not only be more attractive, but it'll be safer. Currently, the spaces that we're talking about are handicapped spaces and they're not in compliant currently. So this will also bring those spaces into compliancy for handicap, uh, use to serve City Hall.
This is a project that's near and dear to my heart. I was one that helped raise the fifteen thousand to make this beautiful mural and I've always stayed at all along. I think it's sad that our residents have to raise funds to resurface a city property. We wouldn't ask the library to raise funds to redo the prop, the parking lot. Uh, I think this is something that the city needs to invest in, uh, rather than have us individuals raise funds. We wouldn't ask for, um, Parks and Rec to raise their own funds to do a parking lot. But this is something that is a placemaker in our city. People come specifically for this and with the centennial of Route sixty-six happening, even more people are going to be traveling down sixty-six and we need to be proud of this parking area.
Thank you, yes, and you've been a great supporter of my, our design point with, uh, Main Street is here today and they've been working on this diligently from the design to meeting with, uh, with consultants and meeting with Arnold and doing what we can. So Arnold did give me a, a quote here, which I think you have, for just the concrete work itself. We've already, um, acquired the funds, uh, for the planters and depending on, um, what this quote comes to or what the work comes to, we may already be able to move forward with some furniture as well and.
I love that you're making the space, Vicki, you know, something that residents can also sit, sit at, um, sit in front of during events that can be used. So I think, um, I would like to see a broader, uh, paving of not only this small square area that will serve Main Street, but also our utility billing department is right there and our, uh, our Parks and Rec department park in some of those areas. So I wonder if that might be a, a good approach, you know, I don't, I don't know what you all think about maybe, uh, getting an updated bid for, uh, something that's a little bit bigger? What do you guys think?
Uh, yeah, I think if we're gonna do the, the small area, we might as well look at the whole area and see what it would cost us.
But have the city pay for it.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Cause they're asking to raise funds.
Yeah, we, we already have, um, funds raised.
But you could use that for something else.
Right, and if we have other projects, then we would gladly put those funds towards.
Yeah. No, I mean, that.
We, we need to consider the, the capital improvements that we can make to benefit not only, not only the Main Street program, but our, all of our citizens that utilize that parking lot, our employees that use the parking lot. And, um, and to just serve the community with handicapped spaces and, and a beautiful place to sit.
So how about, how about this, how about I amend my emotion, my motion to send this back to?
Main Street program?
Yeah, the Main Street program to look at the whole parking lot for that area.
In conjunction with, with probably whoever, you know, Mi- Mitchell?
Right.
Can decide what the best.
Yeah, staff can come back with a cost of what it's going to cost to replace that parking area that's at general vicinity, so we'll come back with a cost and try to have it for you for the next council meeting to consider.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Um, I'll second that motion. You, you made the motion to amend?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that motion that's on the floor?
You have a worried look, so that means we're looking to get the city to pay for it.
Yes, no, no, I wasn't worried, I just, I almost said something, I caught myself, it's like, wait, they're not done.
Yeah. No, I want you to know that we're not putting it down, we're saying yes.
One of the first things I see in the bottom right is this big old pothole.
Yep.
Yeah.
That everybody's running over when they go pay the water bill.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I think this is something for us to look at and see what we can do.
This is long, in the long run, it's just better to get it all done at once and have to try to piece it back in together, I would think.
Great. So the motion on the table is to amend the prior motion to send this item back to Main Street and to city staff to evaluate a further paving improvement project that would extend beyond just the proposed spaces. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your support. We appreciate it.
At this time, we'll consider approving the purchase of two items for the police department in the total amount of five hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents, including the budget amendments, directing the city clerk to prepare any necessary financial loan documents or documents to purchase outright for the following. Flier, sir, Flier Sky Watchtower in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. Terradyne Gurka MVP armored vehicle in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars to be paid from the pest, police pest fund as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Chief, come tell us about these items.
I thought we had a Sky Watch Tower.
Actually, we do not. We utilize one that we borrow from our neighbor, Oklahoma City. It is what we use for Rock the Root. That unit is the unit that was in your packets. That's what we would like to purchase for the city of Yukon. We only currently borrow it from Oklahoma City for Rock the Root. The capabilities are that the new units are Wi-Fi compatible. They have their own self-contained network video recorder. Unit we expect has not only thermal cameras, but night vision cameras. So Christmas in the Park, Festival of the Child, Chisholm Trail, Easter on the Prairie. Any event that we hold in the city of Yukon, that unit can be set up. It can be in, then transmit all of its video feeds to our communication center, the emergency operations center. It is just an invaluable tool to have, to document an incident, to be able to manage an incident or an event. So that's why we brought the Sky Tower to you. We think that probably with the number of events that we do annually, that it would be more than a, an asset that would prove its life cycle for us.
How many people does it hold? How many people would man?
Two.
And you say the life cycle. How long is the life cycle of a?
If you store the unit, don't leave it outside. I think you're looking at ten to fifteen years easily.
Do we have somewhere where we can store it?
Uh, right now, that would only be in our garage. In our capital projects plan that you'll see over the next couple of years, you're going to see storage and basically garage space built at the police department. We currently have over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of assets. And we are storing them out in the elements outside where they're sun baked, they're beat, they're hailed on. We, for a quarter of that, we could build a storage facility on the current property of the police department and house all this equipment.
Okay. Tell me about the, the other item.
Uh, the other item is, is large. It is armored. I like to refer to it as a rescue vehicle because that's really become the tendency and the use for these. Many of our citizens have seen through check day parades, the large military surplus MRAPs that the sheriff acquired several years ago. They've really, even after serving in active duty, brought back and put in service by a lot of agencies, they've kind of run their cycle. The other problem with those is you have to be specially trained to operate them and drive them. And they are so heavy that most of the time, we have trouble on county roads getting them over bridges. But then you can imagine what that weight does to our city streets. The unit you're looking at here has a very limited gross vehicle weight, easily maneuverable. It's a Ford F four fifty unaltered chassis with a large diesel engine. It doesn't require any special operation training. Any member of the police department could get in the cab of the vehicle and drive it on a scene. Being that it would be our vehicle and not an asset that the sheriff currently holds, we'd be able to deploy it at any time we would need it.
Tell me what we, tell me what we would need it for.
Largest scale event for us would be an active incident at a school. An everyday event for us is to execute a search warrant on a home. Right now, five out of our seven warrant services that we're doing a month are violent offenders. Most of them are convicted felons, which is why we're serving the warrant on their homes. And here's of late, most of those incidences, not only in our city, cause we haven't had it, but occurred once, was a barricaded subject. Our neighbors to the south, they had a incident and officer involved shooting. Oklahoma City just had an officer involved in a shooting a month ago. And the only way they were able to save that officer is to drive one of these armored vehicles up and put his body in it and back out. There were five of those units deployed that day of that shooting by various agencies in, in the state. And every one of them took rounds from that gunman that day. I would love to tell you, we'll never deploy it in that situation. But I don't want to stand in front of you and say, I wish we would have, or I wish I'd had it.
We're gonna finance it for five years?
Yeah. It would, and that's why I lumped them together. Our police pest account is more than healthy enough and will continue to gain strength over time. So we could bundle these two items in one five-year loan, pay for them annually, do an annual payment and, and have both of them. The armored vehicle, that life cycle is gonna be twenty, twenty-five years.
So one of the questions that was brought up to me, when you, I'm gonna call it a toy, when you get a new toy, you want to get new gadgets to go with the new toy.
Right.
What else is this gonna need?
Uh, it really won't need anything else. It comes with a ton of accessories. They come with it and we even were able to spec some that wouldn't be standard, that would be considered options. So it's going to have a full winch capacity on it of about seventeen thousand pounds to the front. It's gonna have a gas delivery system. It's gonna have a door ramming system. All of these things can be operated from within the vehicle, has forward-facing video recording, it has rear-facing video recording. We really didn't leave too much out, just because the nature of the vehicle and that you're looking at a twenty-year piece of equipment, you kind of want to get everything you need on it and not have to, to come back later and go, hey, I wish we would have got that.
Is this gonna be an item that, I know we have mutual aid with other departments.
Yes.
If Mustang called and said, hey, we need to do a search warrant on a house, would we use this?
Yes.
So not just Yukon will be using it, but other communities?
It would, it would be a resource available to the, to the multi-jurisdictional tack team should they need it.
Okay. And you said I could drive that?
Would you like to drive it?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes. Well, the plan is, and then another reason, they are, they are actually building this unit right now. It's due to go to the International Association of Chiefs Conference in, in October. And so if you approve the purchase of this, it will be going to the I A C P conference with the billboard acknowledgement that that vehicle belongs to the city of Yukon.
Very good.
Head party in Boston. Does this watch tower have air conditioning, heating in it? The watch tower?
The watch tower.
Is it cooled and heated?
Yes. Yes, it is. Self-contained unit, rooftop unit. And it has its own self-contained generator. You don't, it doesn't require shoreline power. And we expect the generator on that Sky Tower to be gasoline.
Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Hillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the request for proposals for security control, lighting control, and door access for the Yukon Police Department as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we not have these things right now?
We do. We have an analog camera system. It's the original system that was put in the building in oh eight when we built it. Technology has added some analog cameras that we had to replace over the period that we've occupied the building. We cannot get those cameras. Technology's telling me, hey, it's, everything's going digital and we are not digital with this feature. The other problem we have is that the subcontractor who was hired at the time that we built the station in two thousand and eight, they wrote the code for the control function in the building so that we can operate the doors and the cameras and lights, both in the jail and throughout the building. That can all be controlled, as most of you know, from communications. They're no longer doing that. One of the reasons they may or may not, I know they won't bid on, on the RFP. But it's one of the reasons we had to go out to an RFP. There's a limited number of folks that do this kind of work for both a correctional type situation being the jail and then our non-correctional portion of the building being all of the other areas in the police department. So this RFP is quite large. We did a budget, you all approved a budget amendment last year when we carried the, the funding we had set aside in twenty-three, twenty-four budget to do it. The cost we were getting exceeded that, so we went ahead and brought it forward and increased it. We're hoping that we get some real good proposals, but it will be a total revamp of this system, both for cameras, lighting control, and door access. And hopefully, we, it happens soon. The system we currently have will be unsupported as of December. The contractor who wrote it and built it will not do work on it anymore.
So this would classify as a need?
Yes.
But it's in your budget already. It's in your budget already.
But yes, yes. We carry, we carried it into this current budget. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to declare the Yukon Police Department gym equipment as surplus and authorizing its donation to the Union City Police Department as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I heard from multiple sources within the police department over the weekend that the Union City Police Department has been a real help to our department and are always willing to help on task force items, drone training, many other things?
They do. They're an active participant and partner in the multi-jurisdictional tack team. Then just besides being good neighbors. And you know, they're a smaller agency. A lot of their guys do multifaceted, multi-jobs. And one of them happens to be a fitness coach and instructor and teaches a lot of defensive tactics and, and officer wellness and fitness through Basic Academy. And so they were very interested in the old equipment that was what we put in the building in, again, in oh eight. So we're updating the gym. I'm going to use some seizure money for our officer wellness and fitness. And we're gonna upgrade and kind of upstage our gym. And I'm gonna redo that for the guys so that it, it helps them maintain a healthier and a better lifestyle. It'll keep them fit and hopefully keep them from getting injured and getting hurt on the job. And if I can help a smaller department out with this donation and, and you all see to approve it, then it will be a benefit for even more officers who are working in the county.
Outstanding.
The gentleman you talk about out in Union City, I know him personally, he's, he's a great guy. You should do some training with him.
Yeah.
And Ryan, we're good. We don't need this equipment in any other shielding buildings. Community Center, Dell Robertson Center.
Uh, we did go and visit with Chief Corn and look at all the equipment. We felt like the community center, just based on the size of the equipment, was not a good fit for the equipment. Most of what we need over there is cardio equipment and what they have is primarily machines. But we did go and look at it and made sure that wouldn't be useful within the city.
And it's not, we don't, we don't have any use for it here.
Correct.
Thank you.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll open up the floor for each councilperson to say a few words. In closing, this item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, et cetera. It's not intended for the conduct of city business by members of the public body. Councilperson Selby?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who worked on Rock the Root. It was wonderful. The paper today said there were eight thousand people. It felt more like twenty thousand, but it was a wonderful event and thank you for all your hard work. Also, Adam and I sit down here underneath an air vent and so I'm not, I'm not mad all the time. I'm just freezing to death. And so please know my body language is cold.
Uh, sorry, councilperson Zimmerman?
I just want to thank Robbie, Arnold, Mitchell, and Jason for all the updates. That's a lot of updates, but it sure helps knowing where we're at.
Standing. Councilperson Shriver?
Our emergency team that did a heck of a job at Rock the Root, Corn, both you chiefs, y'all, both your teams did a great job. That's the deal where there's a fine line between the constituents having fun and the police department getting involved. So I think our police department did a great job letting us relax and enjoy our beautiful town and the Main Street. So great job to both your departments out there.
Vice Mayor Wooten?
Um, Fire Chief, Police Chief, I'd like to thank you guys. Situation today in Georgia, bad situation that you, you hate to see in any, any community. And I just, my, my prayers go out to tho, to those kids and to those teachers and those families. And I just, I thank you guys that, keeping our, our community safe and everything that you do. So I appreciate that.
Great. Here's some special upcoming events in Yukon in September and October. Cruise in for a Cause will be held on Thursday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at five P M. It's located in downtown Yukon Main Street. It's free to everyone. All ages are welcome. There's gonna be classic cars, food trucks, and much more. This year also is going to benefit the Yukon Police Christmas with a Cop program. And our famous Czech festival will be held as always on the first Saturday in October, October the fifth this year. Parade starts at ten A M. Downtown and it's free to everyone. All ages are welcome. Come out, experience Czech tradition, history, food, and fun. Uh, I'd like to thank all the city staff that's been working tirelessly on a number of projects. They haven't slowed down at all. In particular, we did a ribbon cutting for both, for all three. The improvements in milling and overlay to Garth Brooks, this was a great partnership with ODOT, Atlas Paving, so on. The repaving of Wagner Road, redoing those panels out there. And then the, the twenty-six, or was it twenty-five, twenty-five panels that have been done so far. Hopefully seventy-five by the time we meet next, and by the end of the month, and ninety-six. As soon as Arnold can get them done and then we'll double that budget and move on to some more panels in your neighborhoods. You'll be driving on smoother streets. All right. And we'll move on to the next agenda item. At this time, we'll consider a motion to recess as Yukon City Council convenes into executive session for discussing the candidates for city manager as provided in twenty-five O S two thousand and three, section three oh seven B one. Take appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Hillmore?
No.
The motion passes. We will now convene into executive session. At this time, the vice mayor will read the minutes from the executive session.
I would like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed. No actions were taken and no votes were cast.
At this time, we'll consider entering into a new employment contract with Norbert Michael Castro.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We still need to adjourn from the executive session.
Yes, sir. At this time, we'll adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second? Mr. Shriver seconded?
I did. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider entering into a new employment contract with Norbert Michael Castro for the position of city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Absolutely.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, an ordinance amending the employee retirement system divine, defined contribution plan for the city manager for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma pertaining to planned design, providing for employer pickup of required contributions, providing for repealer and severability and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Hillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen fifty-five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll consider entering into a new employment contract with Norbert Michael Castro for the position of city ma, manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Hillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as Yukon Municipal Authority reconvene as Yukon City Council. We'll now have the swearing in of Norbert Michael Castro as Yukon City Manager. I'll administer the oath of office with Norbert Michael Castro as Yuk, as Yukon City Manager.
We have Judge King.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Judge King will administer the oath. I didn't see her.
She's right there.
Oh, there she is.
Judge King, if you twist that microphone around where they can hear you on TV just a little bit.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I?
I.
Norman, Norbert, Michael.
Norman, Norbert Michael Castro?
Norbert Michael Castro.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.